I'm calling to order the Finance and Administration Committee meeting of March 11, 2010. Will the minute take or please call the roll? Alderman Chocky. Alderman Winger.
Here.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Here.
Alderman Cadella.
Here.
Alderman Police.
Here.
Alderman Coles.
Here.
Alderman Roy Wesley.
Here.
Alderman Lewitin.
Here.
I declare a quorum. I make a motion to approve minutes dated February 25, 2010. Is there a second?
Second.
On the question, anything on the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item is reporting, actually it's going to be a report, on the fiscal year 2010, 2011 budget. And what I'm going to do is I'm going to ask that Mr. Douthwait start with an overview of the budget process as well as the introduction of funds. But before I do that, I believe we have a new employee in the Finance Department. And Mr. Wilson, would you like to introduce him to the team?
Thank you Chairman Winger. Yes, recently, as last Monday actually, was the first day for Anthony Fashoda. So he's been here all of, today was his ninth day. He came to help me out tonight to take notes and make sure, you know, we didn't miss anything and another set of eyes on everything. He comes to us from a small CPA firm in Schaumburg where he was at for a couple of years. Recently just finished his master's degree at Ulmhurst College. And is going to be going for CPA here in the near future. Not sure what near is exactly. He's got to, you know, do the application and the whole nine. But that's where he is. Nine days, nine days young with the city.
Okay, welcome.
D is in dog, A.
Welcome to Wooddale. Welcome.
Thank you Brett. Mr. Mermis, who's going to do the budget overview, big picture presentation? Okay, there, okay, Mr. Douthwait. And let's start with the overview and so probably the presentation and then we'll pause.
I was prepared tonight to give you a PowerPoint presentation, a nice slideshow with respect to the budget. Because when we started this budget process a couple of months ago and when we finalized it about three weeks ago, I was going to be happy to tell you that we could give you a budget that is slightly in the black. Unlike some of our neighbors north, south, east and west of here who are laying people off and requiring furlough days, we had proposed to you a budget that was $50,000 in the black, which is a razor thin margin on a $12 million budget. To put that in perspective, and one of the aldermen last week said, you know, $12 million is sort of tough to get your hands around. Can you put it, scrunch it down a little bit? So I said, okay, let's assume that your family makes $50,000 a year. I'm giving you a budget that is in the black by $250. That's the razor thin amount that we've got there. All it takes is a $250 swing in an unanticipated medical bill or a car repair and that black budget turns to red. And when you're looking at a $12 million budget, $50,000 really equates to $250 on the average household. So the good news was it was in the black. The bad news was that it wasn't very much in the black, but it was still in the black and we had proposed to you a budget that didn't reduce services, didn't reduce personnel, but it didn't increase services or increase personnel. That was three weeks ago. Since that time, we knew that the state of Illinois had been giving us IOUs for our share of the income tax. They've been in arrears now for four months and it doesn't appear that they're going to start paying that back anytime soon, but we adopted what the mayor referred to, to me today, as the Pollyanna approach and said, well, they'll make it good, okay? They'll pay us back. We haven't seen any indication that that's going to happen. And then yesterday Governor Quinn outlined his proposed state budget, which would, among other things, reduce the local government's share of the income tax by 30%. Now if we take a look at what the state owes us this year and assume that for the next couple of months they're not going to pay us, that's a $600,000 hole in the budget that we had not contemplated. And if the legislature passes the governor's budget with that reduction in income tax, that's about another $300,000 next fiscal year that we don't, we won't see. So that budget that was marginally in the black, now we've got ourselves what we think to be maybe a million dollar hole. Now, a couple of questions. Is the state going to make good on the money that they owe us but have given us IOUs for? Is the legislature going to pass the governor's budget and reduce our share next year by I don't have the answer to that. I'm not sure anybody else up on the dais has the answer to that. But if you take the worst case scenario, our budget next year is basically out of whack by about a million dollars. Now what do we do about that? We're fortunate in that we have a healthy fund balance. We've got about a $12 million general fund budget that we spend. We've got about $10.5 million in the bank. The council's policy has been to keep 50% as its minimum reserve, which equates to about $6 million. So we've got sufficient money in the bank to cushion that million dollar doughnut hole. But you can only pull down that reserve for so many years until you start to hit the magic number of 50% and the alarm bells go off. And we can do that for two, three, four years, but I'm not sure that the council philosophically wants to balance the budget just out of a reduction in the reserve. So we've got about four options available to us. Number one, we can take the optimist point of view and we can say, well, the state's going to make good on its IOUs and the legislature won't pass that budget that Governor Quinn has proposed. And somehow, some way, the state will come up with the means to make good on what they owe us and kick the can down the road for another year and borrow money to make that work. Or you can take the realistic approach, which is, that may not happen and we've got ourselves an issue to deal with that now becomes a real issue like some of our compatriots around us have been dealing with the last two years. So if we've got a million dollar hole in the budget, in the general fund, we can either take it all out of reserve and hope against hope that things improve next year. You can tell the staff to go back and find a million dollars in the budget that we've already given you. Or you can sort of split the difference and you can say, well, we'll take some out of reserve, but we want the staff to go back and take a look at budget cuts. And we're prepared to do any of those three alternatives. I don't know what the prospects are of the state ever making good on the 600,000 that they're going to owe us. I suspect that the legislature probably won't pass that budget and instead will kick the can down the road and just defer the issue for another year or so. But, you know, I think reality has finally hit in the city of Wooddale like it's hitting all of our neighbors with respect to the financial situation that we find us in. Part of it's a recession, sales taxes flat, we're not seeing a whole lot of money coming in, in building permits. And now the state with respect to our share of the income tax has really stuck it to us. And we need to decide on a macro basis what you want us to do. I will tell you that if you're looking at $500,000 or more in cuts, that some of that is going to come from people. When 75% of our budget is devoted to personnel services, you still got to pay the gas bill, you still got to pay the electric bill, you still got to buy salt for the snowplows, you still got to do all those kinds of things. And I'll tell you that if you tell us, come back and give us a half million dollars or a quarter million dollars, it's going to, it's going to result in some personnel issues. We can talk about freezing salaries and we can do that with the 20% of our workforce that's not in the union. We can talk about attrition whereby if somebody quits, we don't replace that employee right away. But if you're talking about significant cuts in personnel, we're either going to have to go back to the unions and negotiate some wage freezes or we're going to have to actually cut some bodies. I don't want to give you an apocalyptic, you know, alarmist viewpoint, but I think this is pretty realistic. So rather than starting the PowerPoint and going through all of the budget papers that we've given you all that may all be irrelevant at this stage of the game, I think the council needs to start talking in a more macro sense about what we want to do in the big picture and let us know what you want to do in the big picture. If you want to just take it out of reserves, it's an easy call. If you don't, it's a more difficult call. And we await your direction, Alderman Winger and members of the council.
Oh, great. Well, thank you for going through that. And I, I'm not going to chair the discussion tonight of going through the budget line by line, that I'd like to send this back for further work by Mr. Douthwait and your department heads to look at, at the following. And I'm going to state it and then I'll entertain any comments, questions or additions, but we're not going to have a real lengthy discussion yet on this. We really need to see some more numbers before we go into, into details or too much strategy on this. So overall though, my, my take has always been to support the workforce and to not see layoffs. That, that's my first, you know, blush at it, that if they can be prevented, I want to prevent layoffs. And, and so I'd really kind of like to open up that opportunity for the employees to really start to, like, understand our budget issues. And so with that being said, Mr. Douthwait, if you can come back to us at the Finance and Administration Committee meeting and look at how would the bottom line be affected if you are to freeze salaries across the board throughout the whole city? And so salary slash COLA. Scenario number two is that you and the department heads will sit down and calculate the dollar amount that we would save by doing the following. Freezing the salary COLAs and step increases. How would that affect the bottom line of their departments? Secondly, within that category, calculating the freeze of salary slash COLAs, step increases and a 10% cut within those departments. And a third scenario is calculating the salary freeze slash COLA increase, the step increase in 20%. And then the, the third category, I'd like to see some other options. Maybe there's some, you know, areas that we can cut within the budget as well that would be recommended by, by you, Mr. Douthwait. Are there any questions on that before I open it up? Okay, first I'm going to.
Are you talking about a 10% and 20% cut in salaries or a 10% and 20% cut across the board in departmental expenditures?
Salaries. Okay. Question. And, and the target is, I'd like to see the target at a million dollars is what we're going for in the budget year. And that's because we really can't put a number on it at this point. There's so many variables that are, are not understood yet. All we really know is that we haven't received about four months of funding from the state, which is about $400,000 that we haven't seen. And we have about four months, four months to go and, and we're looking at anywhere between 600 and 800,000 of missing revenue for this fiscal year. And we don't know if it's going to be 350,000 next year that we're not going to see that we saw last year or if it's going to be 1.2. So you got to pick a number, you got to pick a target, and I say let's aim at a million. And, and it starts the discussions there. With that, I'll start on my right and, and go down the row, except I will recognize Mr. Mayor first.
I'm just going to recommend that we give the staff the maximum amount of flexibility possible. And I would say the direction should be a little more generic than that, that we direct staff to cut a million dollars out of the budget. Then that will come back to you, the city council, and you can evaluate it line item by line item as to what you want to supply out of the surplus funds or what you want to see stick as a cut. But I think we need to trust our department heads and give them the maximum amount of authority and flexibility to try to solve this problem.
Well, I was including that in the third category of come back with suggestions, but I still want to see the numbers of how the salary cuts would affect the bottom line. Is that okay with you?
Sure.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Chocky.
Yes, first of all, I don't think we should cut any services if at all possible. If we're going to cut it, and if we're going to cut salaries, it should be really across the board, including council. If we expect the employees to take a cut, I think we should take the same cut that they're taking. The important thing though is not to, is to cut anything not necessary. All the south side stuff, all the consultants have to be put on hold and everything else. And we need to make sure that we're spending as little as possible. This is the first time that I will agree, we may have to go to that balance we have. I don't like it. I don't like not living within our means. But if we have to go to it, I don't expect we, we would have to go more than a half a million dollars if we have to go that far. That would be my limit if we're going to take anything out of the surplus. But any cuts should be across the board if there's going to be a cut. And nothing extra. Not cutting any services, but not, certainly not adding anything onto it. Thank you.
And just for clarity's sake, I'd like that included in the numbers, the cut of the council too and elected officials within that overall numbers that you come back with. Let's see, Alderman Eugene Wesley.
In that category, we may have a major problem on cutting union salaries. I mean, that, that is going to be a big sticking point. That is going to be the roughest thing to do. I agree we are in a so-called problem here. I again said that I don't like going to reserves either. I think we need to not go the whole entire reserve to balance the budget. I think we may have to go into part of it. I think you are going to have a major problems of if we start cutting union personnel, we will definitely, my feeling, will definitely be in court with arbitration, which will cost the city a lot more money, if we say that. I'm going to go the opposite way that Christine is looking at. I really would like to see if it gets down to it, layoffs and how many personnel we are looking at possibly laying off, if it gets down to it. I like to look at that option. Because if we can't cut it in salaries, I'll be totally honest with you, we're going to be in court in arbitration. That's, that's a given. So I really like to get the figures with that too. And if it comes down to it, what are we talking layoffs? How many personnel? It's a tough thing. It really is. So I like to look at that option too. That's the only thing I'm saying about, if you go across salaries, you're going to have a major problem with court and all that. So I don't know if you should even go that route with even considering union personnel.
I'm not baking down on looking at the decrease in, in the freezes and the decrease in, in salary up to the 20%. However, in the third category of making suggestions to us, I, you can throw that in there, decreasing staff, and we'll look at what that is for the bottom line. So, so we can see that. I'm okay with that. Okay. Alderman Cadella.
I kind of tend towards agreeing with, with what the mayor's saying. I really, you know, I think what Alderman Winger, Chairman Winger, you know, has assembled here for her motion is, is broad enough. I would have preferred it to be a lot more broad in saying, staff, you know, come back to us in two weeks and see what you can do. Because my first thoughts right now are, I don't know that we have an option. We've got to use at least to some degree that savings that, that our manager talked about. Personally, I don't see the problem with the state getting any better. However, this is the first time we're hearing this. This would be the first year these, these changes are implemented. It's still not a trend. So until, until the same possible issues are brought up with, with the state again next year and they're, and they're going to try to, you know, stick us for losing the same amount of money, once is not a trend. I mean, I'm a little afraid of a, of a major knee jerk reaction here. As far as a salary reduction, unless we can do it across the board, non-union and union alike, I do not favor that concept. And I don't know how much time we want to have staff put into developing the numbers if, if we don't know that we've got any flexibility with the union employees. I agree with Alderman Chocky, we can't cut any of the major services, particularly not anything related to health and safety. So we don't have a lot of, a lot of place to give, give anything there. And I agree with Alderman Winger that I don't want to cut heads either, but you know, that, that may be, the final solution may be a combination of, of all or most of these ideas. So that's why I'd like to leave it real broad and, and staff's hands to, to, you know, see if they can impress us in two weeks. I don't envy their job, but I don't envy ours either right now.
Alderman Police, anything?
Yeah. Personally, I don't want to touch the reserves. I think it's going to get worse. Just listening to these guys on TV, they, they sound like a bunch of clowns down there and I don't know what's going to happen. I think if it does get worse, then we may have to touch the reserves. But if we touch them right away, I think we're going to put ourselves behind the eight ball. Bottom line is, we got that CIP that we're going to supposedly spend so much money. I think that there's a few projects in there that can probably put on hold. One I can think of off the top of my head, I suggested it, was the Deer Path right off the bat. I think that was like 100,000. And there's a few other projects in there that I think we might be able to remove so we don't touch the reserves as, as some options.
Alderman Coles, anything? I didn't know if you had your hand raised.
I'd like the Finance Department to work on, work on this. We're conservative, we, the city's been conservative for many years and we've set aside this money for something like this that may come up. And this is the reason why we did it. And that started all probably maybe 10 or 12 years ago. And we've been putting money away and saving it just for in case something like this happened. And if we have to, we have to. If we don't, then we won't. But I, I would suggest that we leave it up to the Finance Committee and all the heads of the departments, see where they can take a little cut here and a little cut there. Committees and training and stuff like that will probably have to be cut out. No more free rides on the city for employees or councilmen too. And so this is, this is the way, we cut a little bit. So everybody should do, pull their belts in and tighten their belt up and try to save some money. So let's, let's see what the council, this Finance Department can do. And until that, we'll not touch anything yet. That's all I got to say.
Alderman Roy Wesley.
I agree with you, Alderman Winger. And I'll leave it up to staff, but I'll give you my 10% right now of brush pickup, this $100,000 of, we could do that in-house, but we could talk about that later too. So there's 10% right there.
Okay. Good suggestion. Alderman Lewitin.
Thank you, Alderman Christine Winger. I think, I've listened to everybody and everybody is tending to talk globally. No one is trying to put the cross T and the dotted I on the city manager. I think Mr. Douthwait is quite capable of coming up with a plan that will be both acceptable to us and acceptable to the citizens of the city. So I can only talk in very, very global terms. My first gut, my first knee reaction is that we should not steal any money from any enterprise fund to cover the balance. We have spent hours debating, negotiating and passing an enterprise fund for the water system. That money is to be used only for repairing pipes, putting in new equipment, building a new facility, taking out deleterious pipes. And we know that that's what we wanted for, that's what we voted it for. We watched how the county manipulated their money and then took the water money and, and put it into the hospitals, put it in to make up their shortfall in other areas. I think we have to hold fast and say that money in an account for an enterprise fund like the water, the sewer, is sacrosanct. No money can be swiped from it to go into the general fund. The second global opinion is, and I'm concurring with Alderman Eugene Wesley, that we should not cut wages. There is an inherent value in human labor. And that value is determined by the value of money. And the dollar is shrinking compared to the ounce of gold. I don't care how high the dollar rises against the euro or the yen, all the currencies are sinking. And the dollar is down against absolute value of commodities. We attract quality employees by making sure that they are paid a comparable wage, have benefits so that we are not seeing them disappear because they can get a dollar more. benefits, so that we are not seeing them disappear because they can get a dollar more someplace else. We're not a car dealership where we're hiring and firing people and they're going from one brand to another because it's selling better. In our police department, we funded the pension fund 100% because we don't want any robocops that are here and gone tomorrow. We want them trained and stay here. We want to give them incentives to continue being here. When they know that they have a fully funded pension, when they know that their health and welfare benefits are strong, we're going to maintain quality employees. And that goes for the non-union people, too. We shouldn't have two tiers of people. They're all qualified, they all work hard, and I don't think we should cut any wages. And then the other thing is, I would say that we must remember that ultimately, ultimately, whether it's five years from today or next year, the state will have to pay its obligations. So that money will come back in. We will be holding that as an asset. So while you say our cash flow may drip down to a loss of $1 million, you got to remember, we have those obligations against the state, and they will continue to be an asset. And that's where I leave off with my global opinions and defer to you, Alderman, Alderman, excuse me, City Manager Dowthwaite, to come up with a program that is appealing to you and to all of the department heads.
So, Mr. Dowthwaite, I believe that you have your direction regarding what we want to see, and I realize that some council people are not in support of reducing salaries, some are not in support of cutting people. So there's a mix there, and what I summarize the three different categories, it stands that I believe we need to see the numbers relative to both ends of the spectrum. So are you comfortable that you have the direction needed?
I'm going to go out on a limb and suggest that the direction to staff basically mirrors what the mayor said. Bring you back a budget that cuts $1 million, however it may be sliced and diced, and give you the alternatives, and lets you see how it plays out in the end.